Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City of Des Moines Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for August 2nd, 2012. To give you a few of the rules and procedures for this evening's meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the City Council. The City Council will hold a public hearing and make final decision on all matters before the commission, other than site plans. The commission's decision to approve or deny a site plan is the final decision by the clerk -- clerk by the city. Woo! I gave you a lot of power again. By the city unless the applicant appeals to City Council. Please contact the city clerk or community development department staff for details on those council hearings. This evening applicants will be given 10 minutes to present the request. Proponents and then opponents will be allowed to speak with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. The applicant will then be allowed five minutes for rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed, and after a motion, the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the issue under consideration, and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed, and we'll get to that in a few minutes. There are three of those, and I understand we may move another one. But will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report. And if you're looking for that, the staff reports are outside, so if you need to get that. Unless an individual present or a member of the commission requests the item be removed from the consent agenda and separately considered under the public hearing agenda. The City of Des Moines is pleased to provide accommodations to individuals or groups with disabilities and encourages participation in city government. To better serve you when possible, please notify us at least three business days in advance at area code 515-2834209 should special accommodations be required. Assistive listening devices are available for the meetings in the council chambers. The Planning and Zoning Commission meetings are also broadcast on MediaCom Cable Channel 7 for customers with that service. The broadcast is also streamed live in real time on the City of Des Moines website at It's actually dm.gov.org. You need to click on the "Watch Live" link for details and for the meeting itself. Kathy, do we have a quorum? Quorum being present. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? Any additions or corrections? Seeing none? Oh, you have -- okay. Joanne's moving them. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Acclamation, Kathy. We have an item, item number six. Eric?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item number six, which is the request by Birdie and Credit Union has asked for continuation to the September 6th. At this point, they had a recommendation for denial. We're coming to design and look at the steps. Any questions, comments?
Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
We're moving that by committee? Okay. Number six. We're going to give the -- All those in favor of the continuance to September 6th, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Passes. Acclamation, Kathy. Okay. I want to talk about the consent items. There are three of those. Request from City Engineer Jeb Brewer to vacate North-South Alley lying south of Raccoon Street between southeast 18th Street and 19th Street to allow for staging of the southeast corridor project. Is there anyone in the audience that's here in opposition to that item? In opposition? Okay. Seeing none? Item number two is the City Council initiated request for review and recommendation of Ingersoll and Grand Avenue revitalization strategy as amended by city staff and Ingersoll and Grand Avenue Planning Committee. Is there anyone here in the audience to speak in opposition to that item? Seeing none? Okay. Why don't you go ahead and ask it now?
I'm just reading the staff recommendation, and it says, "As a reference document, the Ingersoll and Grand Avenue revitalization strategy would not be a formal element of the city's community character plan, but we keep it kept on file and provide a contextual basis for reviewing plans and improvements within the planning area." Does that basically mean the same thing as a revitalization plan for neighborhoods? Because they're on file and they're used as recommendations, so does this mean the same thing?
I'll let Mike progress there.
Okay.
Yeah. Basically, the revitalization or neighborhood plans, is what we refer to them as, oftentimes have land use plan amendments to them, so that we're actually amending a land use map or incorporating the proposed land use designations in the plan, in the neighborhood plan, into the comprehensive plan. This strategy did not have any land use plan amendments to it, proposed, and so this wording of how it would be a reference document is exactly the same as what we did with the discovering the rivers master plan, what we called prior to the principal riverwalk. So it's a reference document. It doesn't go through like the Polk County Board of Supervisors and the NRB like a -- or I'm sorry, it did go to the NRB, but it would not go through like the Polk County Supervisors and all of that for adoption like a neighborhood plan would.
So this has -- I guess I'm --
It's a guide.
A little holistic guide.
It's a guide, a policy guide. There's numerous, numerous policies in there, and if you look at the beginning of the document, there's a preamble to the document that references. There's a lot of ideas in the plan that need to be further evaluated and researched and require individual action by council to implement or adopt, so.
That is, Jason. CJ? Okay. Item number three is request from Des Moines Apartments LP, represented by Sean Fauch, for review and approval of a site plan in Des Moines Apartments LP under design guidelines for multiple-family residential on property located at 405 Sixth Street, which is the Des Moines building, to allow a conversion of the building on floors 3 through 15 from office use to 136 residential apartment units, and renovation of the first floor for restaurant and retail use. Is there anyone in the audience to speak in opposition to that item? Seeing none? I understand it was another item. Joanne, did you want to?
Do we have questions?
Why don't you wait a second? Go ahead, let's get this done.
I would like to see if we could move number five onto the consent agenda.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to number five tonight? You're here in opposition, ma'am?
Well, I think I'm in opposition to the recommendation that's similar to the request. So the recommendation that --
Okay. All right. That's fine. That's fine. Sir, you said you had a question?
Yeah, on number three.
Why don't you speak -- why don't you step to the podium if you've got a question? Yeah, we'll do that.
Hi, I'm Larry Bradshaw, and I live across the street from this proposed development. We were just questioning where the parking is going to be for the 136 units.
Eric, Kevin.
Mr. Chair, there's no requirement for parking in the C-3 district, and I'm not sure that there's no indication on the site plan of any particular arrangement, so I guess in the C-3 district, the market would drive that. I'm not aware of any specific agreement that the developer is looking at. Perhaps they're here to --
Yes. Mr. Fauch, I believe, is here. He might be able to explain.
Yeah, go up and speak if you have a response.
Hi, I'm Sean Fauch. I live at 8405 Blackstone in Johnston. I'm one of the owners of the Des Moines Apartments LP. We actually own the Liberty Garage immediately north of this building, which has 270 parking spaces in it, much of which is committed to other tenants, but part of which is available here and part of which will cycle normally as tenants move in and out. So we estimate that garage can accommodate most of the demand that we expect from this garage, and then our expectation is that we -- that garage can accommodate most of the demand we expect from this building, but that any additional demand that might come about, we expect to be able to lease from one of several adjacent parking areas that have lots of space. So we really think it's going to be pretty easy to deal with.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to move the consent agenda? Greg and Joanne? Any questions? Discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Did you have something to say?
Kathy, I'm going to abstain from two.
Okay.
I'm going to abstain from three.
Okay. You got that? Let me give you a minute here. All right. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Other than the abstentions, it's by acclamation, Kathy. Okay. Moving on to item number four. It's a City Council initiated request to amend the zoning ordinance text in Chapter 134 with regard to regulation of businesses selling liquor, wine, and beer. Mike, are you presenting on this one?
Yes.
Thanks, sir.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to reiterate. Sorry.
Okay, everybody, close your eyes.
Are we supposed to drink at this portion of this?
Beating broadcast lights, Mike.
Oh.
My camera.
I didn't hear you say that.
I didn't hear you say that.
Okay.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to reiterate.
Okay, everybody, close your eyes.
Are we supposed to drink at this portion of this?
Beating broadcast lights, Mike.
Oh.
Now we don't --
I didn't hear you say that.
I didn't hear you say that.
I didn't hear you say that.
I apologize.
I'm going to abstain from two.
Okay.
I'm going to abstain from three.
Okay. You got that? Let me give you a minute here. All right. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Other than the abstentions, it's by acclamation, Kathy. Okay. Moving on to item number four. It's a City Council initiated request to amend the zoning ordinance text in Chapter 134 with regard to regulation of businesses selling liquor, wine, and beer. Mike, are you presenting on this one?
Yes.
Thanks, sir.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to reiterate. 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 I'm going to reiterate.
Inadequate site standards for, that were detrimental to nearby uses. So as far as regulating density, there were a couple of, in this proposed ordinance, there are a few things that have been proposed. First of all, one of the new requirements proposed is to require a quarter-mile separation between any new business selling liquor. Existing businesses would be allowed to continue to operate as they are at those locations, but any new licenses would have to be separated by a quarter-mile from any existing business selling liquor. That would apply to the liquor stores, to limited retail or limited food sales establishments and convenience stores. So those are the very, in our category, and you'll see a chart in your, that was provided to you, that's the very small, under 10,000-square-foot-sized buildings that require that quarter-mile separation. The next requirement, additional requirement, new requirement, would be to require a 500-foot separation between a business-selling liquor and any church, school, daycare, or park facility. Right now, that requirement is 150 feet, so that is a 500-foot, 350-foot increase in that separation distance. The, I apologize, I had a map that showed the impact of these, these different regulations. Ultimately, it does reduce the area that's available within the city for the sale of liquor products, but it's still, there is still a significant portion of the city that's C-2-zoned, that would still allow new businesses to open up. The existing businesses would be allowed to continue to operate as they are, and so generally, we think that those are effective regulation. Other proposed ordinance changes, including this, are getting back to the which types of uses are going to require conditional use permit. As I said, all of these smaller uses are, are subject to those separation standards. We are proposing that the general retail sales category, or food sales category, be required to get a conditional use permit from the zoning board of adjustment. They would not be subject to the quarter-mile separation requirement, or the 500-foot separation requirement, but they would have to go to the board of adjustment still and get a conditional use permit. Just for reference, the, the uses that, that fall into that general retail or general food category would include, in Des Moines, for examples, most of the Walgreens fall in that general category, those are 10,000 to 40,000-square-foot range for general sales. So the Walgreens are in a 20,000-square-foot, plus or minus, building typically. CVS is now entering the market, so more of the, I guess, chain pharmacy, retail sales establishments fall in that. Dollar General, for example, there are several businesses in town that Dollar General would be over 10,000 square feet. Another example that would have an existing license would be the Dolls Grocery Store on Beaver Avenue in Beavendale. It's about a 29,000-square-foot building. Other general and food sales categories, or uses that fall in that range are Gateway Market, the La Tapa Tia Grocery Store on East 15th Street, et cetera. So if those were to come in tomorrow and ask for a new liquor license, they would be subject to going to the zoning board of adjustment for a conditional use permit. The very large category, over 40,000 square feet, examples of that would be Hy-Vee on Fleury, Dolls on Ingersoll. Those would continue to just be subject to an administrative issuance of the liquor license for those establishments, and historically, the truly large grocery stores have not been an issue from a, from a liquor sales standpoint. We also propose to enhance the conditional use permit review standards, and, and very quickly, I want to run through those. First of all, there's a requirement to increase exterior lighting to eliminate hiding places. The caveat to that is, we want to ensure that that's not detrimental to the adjoining residential uses. Most of the sites, most of the sites, the Walgreens and the grocery stores and that have adequate lighting. It's generally the, the very small operations, they've gone into a former gas station site, et cetera, that have somewhat limited lighting on those, and so this would just give the opportunity to require a better lighting standard. We want them to post no loitering signs on the property, that has been an issue, that's been identified with numerous properties. Requiring a permit for any outdoor speakers, that would just be a permit through the permit and development center for a sound permit. Obviously, it's just to keep it at an auditory nature. Obviously, many of the C-stores, for example, have a, if they have a drive-through car wash, there's a menu board that has a speaker on it, it's asking you what product you want on, what car wash you want. Or the gas pump has a, has a speaker where the attendant inside can speak to the person at the pump. We just want to say, you need to get a sound permit, make sure, when you come in for your license, to ensure that your, those will be at an auditory nature. We have had some issues with, with noise on some of these businesses. Then find, a couple of final ones are to impose a burden of proof on the applicant to demonstrate their compliance with the sales percentages. Currently, it's really up to the city to prove they're not meeting the standard, and this change in the code would put the burden on the applicant to prove. We have had conversations with the alcoholic beverage division, the state, and they have pledged willingness to, to help us with, by providing purchase records of their business, how much they're buying from the state liquor warehouse, so we can compare that, and we could request sales tax receipts from the business and compare the two as a kind of quick analysis, if there's a question about whether or not somebody's meeting that 40% sales requirement. If we suspect additional, that additional information is, is required, we could then obviously put that burden on the applicant to provide a, an audited statement, or, or something of that effect. There has been, we've, we've tried to be very flexible in this, because we have heard concerns from the, from the businesses that the audited statement is a, is a significant cost to, to the business, and so we heard that the last time, and we've tried to work within that parameter, but also providing additional leverage for staff to get information from, from the applicant. Finally, three, three final things. Security, for limited food and retail establishments and C-stores, this, the proposal would be to require that the liquor be displayed in a locked cabinet behind the counter, accessible to the employees only. I know I toured the newest QuickTrip convenience store on 22nd Street in West Des Moines, their invitation, and they have a locked cabinet behind the, their counter where they sell the liquor out of, and we believe that that would be a, a better way to have the, the product displayed in, in those, those types of establishments. For all other, except for the limited food and retail sales and C-sales, so this would be a liquor store, or grocery store, or whatever, we would expect that they would employ a security tag system, or a cap system on, on, on their liquor products, or have more than two employees on duty at one time in the business. So we kind of give the option to them as to which one of those they choose. Obviously, most grocery stores will have more than two employees on duty at any time, so, and if you go into Drug Town or Hy-Vee, a lot of their product already has security cap systems on it, so we don't think that that's too much of a burden on their, their operations. And then finally, we want them to post the owner's information in a visible place on the premises, so that if the zoning enforcement staff, or the police, or citizens have questions about the operations, that they have a direct contact with the owner of the property, and we hope that that will help ensure better compliance. A lot of this is summarized in the table which you received in, in the, in the packet, it's in the ordinance. We believe that the, the table is a little bit more user-friendly. Previously, it just said it was a, referenced it as the review type, condition one, condition two, and then you had to go down into the text and find out what that meant. Now we have each of the regulations on the separation distance, and that provided in the chart itself, so we think it's a little bit more user-friendly for people. We did have a, a public meeting last week on this. We invited all of the existing class, beer, wine, and liquor license permit holders, sent out invitations to them, invited them to a public open house last week. We had about 10 people show up at that. We, I think a lot of the concerns were alleviated by the fact that the existing operations are basically grandfathered, with the exception of, we would like to see them comply with the lighting and the operational standards on, on their businesses, and so those are viewed as more operational-type corrections that could be made in the business, not a change in use, or a change in, in their license. As far as the continuing schedule of this, we would hope that we'd have a recommendation this evening. The city council would be scheduled to set a date of public hearing on July, or I'm sorry, on August 13th, for their August 27th meeting, so the hearing would be on August 27th at 5:00 PM. And if the council chooses, they could waive second and third readings of the ordinance and have it finalized on that date. The moratorium would then expire on August 28th, and we could resume issuing liquor licenses. If they don't choose to waive those readings, they will have to extend the moratorium and accommodate an additional two readings of the ordinance. So I know that, one final thing that came up at the neighborhood meeting was a, a issue with, that, a request to potentially exempt, or create an exemption in the ordinance for the pharmacies, retail pharmacies, larger retail pharmacies that would be in that general category, so to basically create a subset of the general food and retail sales to exempt pharmacies from having to go and get a conditional use permit. In consultation with the city attorney's office today, I was advised that the city attorney does not recommend creating such an exemption. He believes that it could jeopardize the ordinance, and really takes us back to where we were, probably two changes ago, when we created these categories to try and regulate by size of building, or size of business, rather than trying to dictate all of the different merchandise that's sold, or define it by the merchandise that's sold, and it, once again, it's that morphing of that retail function of, of each of these businesses. So with that, the staff does recommend approval of this ordinance. We would ask for your recommendation of the council to approve this ordinance, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions? Ed?
Mike, what's the, what are some of the triggers for compliance and enforcement?
Sure. As with a majority of our code, a lot of our enforcement is, is complaint-based. So generally, when they come, when a business comes in to renew their liquor license, we would review to see if we'd had complaints, if we had enforcement actions, things like that. The key provision of the conditional use permit requirement is that if we do have complaints, and it is determined that, from the zoning enforcement staff's perspective, that a nuisance exists, it reserves the right for the zoning board of adjustment to retract that conditional use permit.
Is there, is there something in there that would, with the grandfathered ones, that would trigger compliance with the new ordinance if, I mean, would, could that, if, when they go to renew and there's complaints, and could they say that, you know, you can, you can continue to have your license as long as you comply with the current ordinance, or is there, when, when they add on to the store, or?
Clearly, any expansion would be subject to a new conditional use permit from, from those existing businesses, so any expansion of their sales would, would trigger that. I guess what I would be advocating is that as they come up for their renewals, we would, you know, do a review of zoning, determine their grandfathered status, and then attempt to get compliance with some of those operational standards, possibly on the property at that time, as far as the security system or storing, you know, we would be trying to get the implementation of the cabinet behind the counter immediately, but as far as the requirement to go get a conditional use permit, we wouldn't make existing ones.
And is the, the audit request piece of this, is there, is there timing attached to that in the ordinance?
I'm not clear on what you mean by the timing.
The, a lot of the, the things that have been to council, where they've ordered the audits, are relative to the percentages, they've given them six months, eight months, 12 months to, to comply with the audit. Is that?
There's nothing specifically in the ordinance, I think that's an individual consideration, and, and we need to be careful to, to distinguish between the council taking action regarding a liquor license issuance, and the zoning board of adjustment reviewing a conditional use permit application, so, but clearly, upon request, the intent would be under this ordinance, upon request, the zoning enforcement officer could, could request whatever information is necessary to determine compliance with, with the sales percentages. Once again, they do have until 2013, the end of 2013, to be in full compliance with that 40% limit now, so.
Any other questions? I do have one, Mike.
Sure.
We have no sunset provision with respect to those that are non-compliance.
No.
Have we ever thought about the prospect of having a sunset provision, or?
Not, not in this regulation, no.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay.
Since the applicant is the city of Des Moines, I'm going to ask, I'm not going to ask the applicant to step forward, obviously, but is there anyone here in favor of that application that would like to speak, in favor of the application? Seeing none, is there anyone here in opposition to the application? Please come forward, give us your name and address.
My name is Chris Posey, I'm an attorney. Office address 317 Sixth Avenue, Suite 300 here in Des Moines. I represent Iowa CVS Pharmacy, and I wouldn't say that we're in opposition, we're in, we're in support of modification of the proposed ordinance. As Mike had indicated, and I'd just like to have you receive and file this, on behalf of CVS Pharmacy, I think I can show you this, what the ordinance is.
Just give it to, just give it to Ken.
I'll give it to Ken. You can switch to the camera, I can just show it to you, and then I can kind of let you know what I'm giving you, because I only brought one copy. We began a discussion after the public meeting last Thursday with Mike about a way in which the pharmacies could be exempted from the conditional use permit requirement and process that is proposed in the ordinance. And on behalf of, I can speak for CVS, I can't speak for Walgreens, but I think they would operate fairly similarly in what they do, and on behalf of CVS, it's not the requirements that are set forth in the conditional use permit process, it's the possibility of another public meeting, and having prejudices weigh into, or thoughts weigh into that, that wouldn't otherwise be required, when it can be an objective standard for determining whether a license would issue to these type of institutions. I asked Mike in the meeting last week, and I think he would say the same thing today, that this ordinance is not intended to address a problem that has arisen with the operation of the pharmacies in the sale of liquor as they exist today. Instead, it's been to address the possibility that you might have sham pharmacies erect themselves, so that they can claim they're a pharmacy, and then gain the provisions of it. So what we set about to do, and we understand the advice the city attorney has given, that Mike spoke about tonight, that it may somehow harm the ordinance, we made a proposal on what could be done, and that is illustrated here. This is the same chart that's in the ordinance, and I made my modifications in blue as to what could be done, but the general retail sales component, which would include a Walgreens or a CVS, because it raises between 10,000-square-foot and 40,000-square-foot, would require this conditional use permit process in either the C-1 up through the NPC districts, whereas the larger stores still have the same sales requirement, same separation distance, those that are over 40,000 square feet, but do not have the conditional use permit requirement. So what we propose to do is put the drugstores into the large component, and say that the drugstores had to be 12,000 square feet or larger, and that would cover most your existing, it should cover all your existing Walgreens stores here in Des Moines, and would cover anything that CVS would build. In addition, then, we sought to create a definition for drugstores here that we've shown in blue, and that is a retail sales establishment of a minimum of 12,000 square foot, feet, which contains a minimum of 900 square feet devoted to the sale of prescription medicines, which are lawful pursuant to Iowa and federal law. Again, this was an idea of how would a pharmacy be different than a Dollar General store? They could easily do this. I think CVS plans to build about 1,000 square feet worth of pharmacy within their stores, and the idea of prescription medicines is that we don't have cough syrup and all that being sold, and over-the-counter cough syrup, and then determine that that's a pharmacy for some other group to do. Also, all of your existing drugstores here in town, I believe, the Walgreens, have a drive-through for prescription medicines, and so we put the additional requirement that a drugstore would have a drive-through prescription medicine sales, but they can't sell alcohol through the, the drive-through window. Again, the idea be another, to propose another factor by which would distinguish the drugstore from any other type of general retail use. And last but not least, we made a proposal that the drugstores do not include grocery stores, because again, we're not trying to induce any confusion in this ordinance that would allow someone to claim that a grocery store is a drugstore, or both. We're trying to let the drugstores stand alone, largely because we think the drugstores would do it responsibly. The drugstores are not in it to sell the majority of their sales as, as alcohol, they offer the alcohol as a convenience. They have the ability to sell beer and wine, and when they sell liquor, it's not going to be in large-scale or wholesale volume. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about this proposal, but again, I'm respecting the advice your city attorney has given to you, so we're just asking that you receive and file this as part of your deliberation tonight, and we'll continue to have discussions with the city attorney and/or the city council as this moves forward to a, a public hearing. If there's any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
But just simply want you to receive and file this.
Why don't you receive it, Ken?
Did you say, you represent CVS?
CVS.
And is there currently a location in Des Moines?
There's two locations that CVS is, is looking at presently. One, we were here a few weeks ago on an alley vacation, second in Euclid. The other site that they're looking at is Southeast 14th and Park Avenue here in, in Des Moines. So they're going to enter in, they've got a store in Ankeny that they had approved, but at least for Des Moines, there are two stores that, that they are looking at. And again, looking at the requirements, I don't think they'll have any problem meeting the conditional use standards that the city has set forth. I mean, lighting, no loitering, these are things that the pharmacies would encourage anyway, and they're going to have more than two employees in a, in a store at, at all times. It's just we didn't see that there was a need to add this additional level of regulation for what we think would be very responsible operators within the, within the community. They're not the ones raising the, the question is the best way to say it.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chris. And Chris, Mike, what, when is the, when does this go before city council?
It would be proposed, the hearing by the city council would be on August 27th, so there's.
Just so that he knows that.
Yeah, there's opportunity to continue discussions on, on their proposal.
Anyone else here to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
I'll move staff into receiving and filing the request from CVS.
Yeah, that'd be good. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed?
Abstaining.
You're abstaining. One abstention. Acclamation on the rest. Got it? Okay. Thank you, it passes. Moving on to item number five. It's a city council-initiated request for vacation of a north-south alley in an east half of east-west alley lying between Southeast 8th Street and Southeast 9th Street, and between Scott Avenue and Shaw Street. Eric, you presenting on this one?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Eric Clendy, senior city planner. This item is coming to you as a result of an owner, the owner of the property located at this location solicited the city council to consider this matter, because of the policy currently requires consent of all adjoining property owners when making application for a vacation. And in this case, one of the adjoining owners is, three of the properties is Union Pacific Railroad, and they were not forthcoming in, in consenting to that individual's application, so the city council then took an action to ask the plan and zoning commission to consider the vacation of this segment of right-ofway. It's undeveloped right-ofway. You will see in the aerial that the, an abandoned line that's been removed has passed through this in the past, but we're, we're dealing with an L shape. This segment to the, to the west, that used to go through the block, has been already vacated in the past, is still in the ownership of the city.
Eric, let me ask you something. That, what looks like a railroad right-ofway.
Mm-hmm.
I think I'm pretty good shot on that, aren't I? That area, is that rails-to-trails available?
I specifically asked the Parks Department to evaluate that for any potential or possibility that it fits into their proposed network, and they did not indicate that we needed to reserve this for that purpose.
Of course, the city doesn't want to do that, but what I'm asking is, is it eligible for rails-to-trails? Is it an abandoned right-ofway that's owned still by?
It is, but I'm not sure what the, I'm, I'm not privy to any of the railroads' designs on the property.
All right.
They obviously aren't willing to consent to another private owner's request to vacate the, the alley, so they may have some designs.
Well, they pulled the tracks, so that would be an abandoned.
Yes, it's abandonment at this point, but they still own it, and, and as you know, even the city on other locations has worked with railroads in situations where there's abandoned railroads, but they're not willing to sell their property, so.
Okay. Anything else?
I did want to show you the consent map. You did, I'm passing around the cards, there's one individual, we notified everybody on the block, even though they didn't have direct frontage on to this particular piece of right-ofway. So there's three individuals. This is a piece of land owned by Union Pacific Railroad, this is a piece, and this is a piece. The city has this intervening vacated segment of the alley, and then three, three, or four private owners to the south here, and another private owner to the west that has consented to this, so. We didn't see any purpose of it for public, city public purpose, there's not interference with any utilities that we're concerned about. We did note that this is in proximity to the area that's defined in the market district plan, which again, is a reference document that we're working with as a guideline. Without knowing, or having formulated what the future development potential is for this more specifically, staff is recommending that any conveyance be made in form of a lease at this point in time, unless it's evaluated by the council, that it would be something they could dispose of.
That's okay, Mike.
Yeah, Eric, so the, the market district plan, actually, the limits of that was Scott Street, Scott Avenue.
So this is right on the.
So long-term, we, the, that market district plan had showed some higher intensity, mixed-use development, residential development, basically south of ML King and north of Scott Avenue. So long-term, I think you could see potential for transitional use as you get down to the single-family residential further to the south, but the planned boundary did not go, go south of Scott Avenue, so just follow that up.
Leasing would still allow adjoining owners to be able to use it in concert with their property, for, you know, gardening, or whatever. We probably wouldn't allow them to build structures over it.
Will?
Eric, this question doesn't have to do with this particular instance, it's a general question, and answer it as briefly as you want, but not in as much detail as I'm sure you know. How much authority does the city of Des Moines have over railroads?
That's better left to council, I think.
Yeah. It's, it's a mixed bag, I think, depending on which railroad and which agreement over time, you know, there's ancient franchise agreements that are still in effect, so I think it's, every situation really has to be evaluated kind of independently, but certainly there's a lot of intricacy to it.
I think what his question is, and I was about to ask it, is, is this portion of property that we're about to convey overridden by the railroad right-ofway?
In terms of a franchise right, or, we did not get any comments to that effect, that's something that would still be evaluated if we disposed of it.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Obviously, this is a city council-initiated, the applicant's not here, although.
I think the individual is here that was, that, that made the initial petition.
Oh, okay, all right. If you would please come forward, give us your name and address.
Hi, Linda Casas, I'm at 816 Shaw Street that Eric was referring to. So the re- Hi, Linda Casas. I'm at 816 Shaw Street that Eric was referring to. So the reason that Councilman Meyer and I had talked about this is that Union Pacific is not negotiating with me by any means for purchase of the property. So we knew then that they're not going to consent to vacating because they're not responsive. So with that, the only thing that I oppose to is not the recommendation to vacate it, I'm all about it, right, but the purpose that I'm doing that is because I'd like to purchase it, not to lease it. And so that's all I'm opposing to is the purpose of leasing. It doesn't make sense to me. As a property owner, the only purpose I'd like to purchase it for is to make a structure, actually to build a fence, and to make, you know, and to increase my lot land. So that's the purpose of me looking to vacate this alleyway. So it kind of goes against what I'm trying to do if you're just allowing me to lease it.
Well, you understand that the railroad right-of-way may override?
It may, right, but if we go in with a recommendation against what I, my purpose was, that's why I thought I should come and explain what I'm looking to do. And since it's already been vacated to the left of me, and actually, if you go a block even further on Southeast 6, they were vacated and purchased the property and owned clear across the railroad. So, you know, you're talking two blocks away from the unknown. And although the railroad may decline, they've been, the only problem I'm having is I don't have enough money to purchase the property they'd like me to purchase it for. My offer wasn't enough.
Mike, just a second.
Yeah, Eric, could you clarify? I believe we've had some requests for vacation and conveyance by lease in the past that have involved a fence being constructed. Could that not be written into the lease to allow-
Yeah, I think it would allow fences and to maintain it as, the big thing would be permanent structures such as foundation systems. That, but a lease, a long-term lease can be negotiated with our real estate division. So we felt that, you know, we didn't want to really encumber this with some value of real estate other than the land itself, but a fence wouldn't necessarily fit into that. So we have allowed that, garden leases to have fences around gardens and that type of thing.
Are there any questions? Have anything else?
Yeah, I mean, whether it be a fence or not, I feel like I'm still being limited. So I think that it's a little unfair when two blocks down the road, they got to do the same thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And if you'd please step forward, give us your name and address. Is there anyone else? If there's anybody else to speak, I'd ask to get a lineup on the wall here.
Isla Placencia, and the address is 801 Southeast Scott, and, owner of the green area. Now, when you say you're talking about lease, what do you mean by lease? If I lease this, do I have to pay you to lease it?
Eric?
You know, when you lease a house, you pay.
Yes, there would be some consideration. That value would be determined by the council.
Then why would I want to lease and pay you when right now I'm maintaining it and taking care of it? Little unbeknownst to me, I didn't know that there was an alleyway there. So all these years, since 1948, I have been maintaining this property, not only-
You can't adversely possess against a governmental entity.
I'm sorry?
Never mind.
Now, something went over my head. I didn't hear you.
I know. That's what I'm thinking.
He means the fact that you maintained it doesn't give you any ownership.
Oh, I know. No, no, no. I'm not saying that I own it, but I've been maintaining this. Now, if I don't continue to maintain it, what happens?
It just continues to look bad.
Okay, no one's going to take care of this alleyway. No, I just want question, I'm asking these questions because unbeknownst to me that this was there, so I need some answers from somebody. Now, if you can't give me answers, who do I go to?
Ma'am, I'm going to suggest that when we're done with this hearing, you can certainly talk to Eric and he can give you an opportunity to speak with staff on the issues that you have.
Okay. So then, I'm like the young lady that spoke ahead of me. I'm interested in buying just that portion of what pertains to me, and if it's not for sale, then I just want to leave it lay.
Anyone else to speak in opposition or in favor?
And these comments will be entered into what the council sees when they consider this. This will get forwarded to the city council. So there's, they have the ability, and we can continue to evaluate the legal questions that have been brought up here, too.
I think the legal questions are pretty steep in this one, aren't they?
Possibly. I don't want to say that they are. I just don't know, so I want to put it at that.
All right. Thank you, Eric. Is there a motion? I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Mike's moving staff. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the proposal that we convey it by lease, please signify by raising your right hand. Okay. Opposed? Same sign. Ted, Joanne. Ted and Joanne. It passes. Thank you. Moving on to, yeah, moving on to item number seven. A request from Mayorga and Mayorga Partners represented by Alfred Mayorga for review and approval of an amendment to the site plan Aztec Motors under design guidelines for vehicle display lots on property located at 908 Southeast 14th Street to allow revision to the material requirement for the west perimeter lot opaque screening fence along Southeast 12th Street from solid wood to chain link with PVC slats. Eric, are you presenting on this one, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I want to take a careful sequencing of this so you have, understand what has transpired here to bring this to your agenda. You're familiar with the Aztec Motors site that was in front of you. Some of you were on the commission at the time it was reviewed and approved in its current configuration. At that time, we, a site plan of this nature was presented, and that site plan essentially indicated the west boundary along Southeast 12th Street would be a three-foot fence with, that is 75% opaque. Now, at that meeting, there was discussion by the commission that discussed putting in a wooden fence in light of a 75% opaque fence, more of a solid wood fence. However, that condition never made it into the record of the decision. So whether that, it never was put into the motion. So I think it was discussed and whoever made the motion didn't feel that that was necessary. However, when they completed the documentation in, based on the commission's recommendation, then they provided us with a site plan that had a wooden fence shown on it with a, and it was a four-foot wooden fence, which actually, it was an error because we would only normally allow a three-foot solid fence of that nature. So we administratively finalized that document based on the commission's decision with a fence that was a foot too tall.
Why is it, I mean, I hate to sound stupid here. Why would a three-foot fence be there instead of a four-foot fence?
Well, it's a, it's a public right-of-way. It's considered a front setback. So we only allow fences of a solid nature to be three-foot high in the front setback.
Well, headlines, but not to one.
Right. Many-
Oh, all right.
Right. Many people might feel like that's the backside, but it's also another street right-of-way. So they, by the terms of the ordinance, they are not able to put more than a three-foot opaque without going to the board. So that was actually an error that we should have only allowed this to be three-foot. Nevertheless, when the occupancy was finalized, what was actually built was what you see here, which was a four-foot chain link with slats, which had it been three-foot with slats, would have met the actual motion made by the P and Z at the time. But since they gave us a finalized site plan that was signed and made of record with the wooden fence, in order to go different than that, we actually have to bring it back in front of you tonight for consideration of something different or to approve what is there. Now, even what is there would have to be reduced to the three-foot height without relief from the Board of Adjustment. Now, they can do that. They can make the slats shorter so it's only a three-foot section. The chain link section can actually be up to four feet, so. I know that that sounds like a mess, and it is, but what staff's recommendation is, is to do a slight amendment to require the three-foot fence in the same fashion that was originally recorded on the approved document. So taking this elevation and making it a three-foot elevation and replacing the fence that's there with a three-foot.
Three-foot wood.
Three-foot solid, or essentially solid. There's minimal spacing between the slats. And so that's where we're at tonight.
Any questions?
I'll give you a little, there is a number, I mean, there's a substantial row of evergreens that were planted. Some of them do have to be replaced because they didn't survive, but that's actually been the norm on a lot of site plans lately, so.
CJ's favorite plant. I'm sorry.
The applicant is here tonight, so I'll let them make their-
Joanne, do you have a question? Anyone else have a question? Thank you. If the applicant could please come forward. Give us your name and address, please.
There was no consent. Nobody came in to view the site plan for purposes of getting a consent card.
Vince Pagentini, Associated Engineering Company of Iowa, 2917 Martin Luther King, Junior Parkway, Des Moines. We're just requesting that the request, as we submitted it, be approved. The fence appeared to have been good enough for the inspector at the time of occupancy when the permit was issued. So we feel that that's sufficient, too. The other is, as you see in this picture, the location of the fence in relation, it's on a downhill slope from the parking lot. The snow in the wintertime would be falling down to it, not necessarily pushed to it, but as it would start melting, it would be falling towards it. And we feel that would be, taking a wood fence down, we'd just be replacing it. I've seen some of those wood fences do it, and they just don't replace them. And this one would at least allow for the melting to go through it a little better. So we're requesting, like I say, as we-
Any questions, Greg? Nope.
I just have a question.
CJ.
How was this brought back to us? Was, did somebody complain about this fence, or?
Yes.
Because I don't see anybody out here complaining, so I was just wondering, why is it back here?
Yeah, we received a complaint, and so we investigated it completely, and that's where we found the two different discrepancies that I pointed out.
Anything else, Vince?
No.
Thank you. Obviously, there's nobody going to speak in favor and opposition because there's no one here. There's a young lady in the back. Are you, no, okay. All right. I'm going to close the public hearing. We have a motion.
I'd like to move staff.
All right. Staff's been moved. Any discussion?
I would just like to say one quick thing. There was a moratorium on car lots on Southeast 14th, and we had the overlay. We went ahead and granted Aztec Motor their permit to sell cars because they were above a higher standard. And to see this is kind of like going backwards in, I think, something that, I need to reevaluate. The picture that Eric showed us was kind of disheartening. That's all I had to say.
Joanne?
I agree with Tim said, and also slats and chain link fences deteriorate so quickly that any type of wooden fence built properly would allow for snow melting underneath it. There's not a problem with designing the fence properly to take care of that kind of thing. But they are without a doubt the ugliest fence on the earth. Chain links by themselves, yes, chain links by themselves is even better than a chain link with the slats because they just deteriorate in a couple of years. And then, I don't know about you, but an awful lot of people have just let them be until they are absolutely a mess. So I mean, I can't go with it either.
Any other?
I have a, I have a brief comment. I just want to share a comment, a horror story from a friend, a neighbor that lives on a corner who erected a white picket fence on her corner property. And there was a complaint, and she was, she received a building permit to erect it, and time passes, but not very much time, there was a complaint, and the inspector went out a second time and said indeed, the fence that had been inspected and approved was not in compliance with the ordinance. And as a result, instead of causing, you know, bitterness at her own expense, the neighbor took down the portion of the offending fence and erected back one that was in compliance. So the moral of the story is, at least from my, in my opinion, that fences seem to be small, seem to be rather insignificant, and perhaps are overlooked. But when they're inspected, they, the inspectors need to inspect them very carefully because sometimes good fences do not make good neighbors.
Any other discussion? Seeing none?
I just wanted to point one thing out, and that would be, in a site plan such as this, it will get inspected at the time when they give occupancy to the site based on the entire site plan. But an individual residential property that gets a fence permit, if, as long as they, they are, it's up to them to erect that fence in accordance with the permit. And there's not a direct inspection following that until there's a complaint. So I just wanted to point out, on a single-family residential situation, that wouldn't necessarily be inspected afterwards.
All those, I'm sorry, Ted?
Are we still asking questions?
Yeah, if you have questions or comments.
So could you just take me through one more time that the applicant agreed to build a wood fence originally?
Right, when they finalized their documents based on the plan, and then they showed a four-foot fence, which actually can't be done without a trip to the Board of Adjustment. So that was an oversight on our site plan review, staff.
But they had agreed, but we didn't vote on-
The only, the only limitation that was voted on by the P and Z was that it be a three-foot 75% opaque, not necessarily wood, not necessarily.
What if you had done a chain link and you had a lot of slats?
That may be more of a, more recent policy in terms of-
We would never allow slats.
And again, the discussion was in the, there's record of the discussion, but it was never in the motion.
Well, anyway. Okay. Anything else, Ted? If not, I'm going to call to vote, okay? Okay. All those in favor of staff's recommendation, which is denial, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed? Same sign. Acclamation. Staff's recommendation passes. Thank you. We would not, we wouldn't do that. Mike, do you have a director's report?
Can I, if, if anybody doesn't want this paper copy of the Ayerself Plan, may I have it?
Oh, yeah. Sure.
They're expensive. I mean, obviously, keep it if you want it, but if you don't, I'd love to have it.
Want to grab it?
See if you can.
Director's report.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Just a couple of things. First of all, thank you to the commissioners, if you were able to make it to the open house over at the World Food Prize. If you've not been in that building yet, or today was your first trip, I think you were pleasantly surprised by how beautiful the interior of that, that project is. It is absolutely a gem for the city. So anyway, but thank you for attending that. I apologize that Shelley Patisha was, I believe, just starting her remarks as everybody headed over here for our meeting. It is, it is a significant event that she's here for this, and I think it bodes very well. She did speak with the steering committee today and individual st-
She did speak with the steering committee today, and individual staff did have opportunities to talk with her, too. And so we were actively promoting future applications for a, a grant that might work on possibly a regionalized or a model ordinance, zoning ordinance, hopefully that we might be able to pursue some federal grants for. So we did take that opportunity today. Well, hopefully, hopefully that, that would be seen positively in the future, but there's no guarantees. The other thing, I just wanted to update you on your next meeting effective last evening. I attended the Lincoln, I went to the McKinley Crest meeting at Lincoln High School last night. There were about 220 or 230 people at the meeting last night. At the very beginning of the meeting, Anowim Housing did withdraw their request for the project on the property. They are going to look at other properties in Des Moines for that, but at this time, they've withdrawn that request. So on your next agenda, there will not be a hearing on the McKinley Crest project, and that was considered. So with that, that's the director's report.
R and L? Greg? Okay. Edit? Anything else for the good of the group? Seeing none, or return.